Good evening. Hi, I am Sheila O'Neil, I'm the President of the Lynn Teachers Union and I would like to welcome you to tonight's Public Education Forum. Tonight is an opportunity for us to learn more about the candidates running for school committee. Each candidate has submitted a one-page statement about their vision for the Lynn Public Schools, and students, and educators. The candidates will have two minutes to respond to each question and give a closing statement. I would like to introduce Cherish Casey, Brian Castellanos, Donna Capola, John Ford, Lorraine Gateley, Elizabeth Rosario-Gervasio, Natasha Maggie Madre, Jessica Murphy, Jared Nicholson, and Michael Satterwhite. Our moderator for this evening is Colleen McGillicuddy. She is a teacher at Lincoln Thompson and the First Vice President of the Lynn Teachers Union.
The design of the forum is to give all ten candidates the opportunity to answer three questions. The first question will begin with Cherish Casey, and after each candidate answers the first question, we will begin with John Ford for the second question. For the third question, we will begin with Natasha Maggie Madre. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each question. After one minute, the timer will wave the yellow card. The card will again be waved when the candidate has thirty seconds left, and at the end of two minutes, the timer will wave the red card. Time is up. After each candidate has answered the three questions, they will also be given two minutes to give a closing statement. I'm going to begin with you, Cherish. Given the financial impact of charters on the Lynn Public Schools, where do you stand on the expansion of the current charter school and new charters in the Lynn community?
Well, I talk about this publicly all the time. I voted not to raise the cap on charter schools. My son does attend a charter school here. He goes to Kip Elementary School, but I do not believe that we need a lot of people coming into our community, a lot of charter schools coming into our community and trying to profit off of our community, because not all charter schools are alike. So, given the current financial budget right now, I do not believe that we need to allow all various different charter schools coming into our community, but I am okay with the one we have now.
Thank you. Brian, do you want me to read the question?
No, I'm fine. Where can I go? Oh, excuse me. So, my stand is, you know, right now financially, we are in a little bit of a deficit. As we all know, the cash flow comes from the state. By expanding on charter schools, it would be a little bit more difficult to really hold our current charter school accountable right now. And charters, you know, tendencies are, you know, starting to develop a privatized approach, which does, in long-term spectrum, takes away from our public school system. Also, in terms of just, you know, to the point where we have to expand on anything, I think we need to expand on what we have already as a Lynn community, and to focus on what we have organically, so we can spread, you know, our already, you know, spread our, you know, our goods. Our dollar has to get spread a little bit more further.
Thank you, Brian. Donna?
Yes. I am actually against charter schools, and after sitting on the Lynn School Committee for eighteen years, I have seen the financial burden it has put on our school district. It is a huge burden for us. It takes a lot of money away from the Lynn Public Schools, and there are certain things. I sat, actually, in 1992, when ed reform was passed. I had the opportunity, as a PTA State Board Member, to be appointed by Governor Wauw to sit on the table for the discussion of how ed reform was going to work and how charter was going to work. And we were sort of reassured that this would not be any burden to any public school, but it has been. One thing in particular is that when a child goes to charter school, when they, if they decide that they do not want to be, stay in the charter school, their family decides that they want to return to public school, if that happens after October 1st, we do not have the money returned back to us in the school department, but yet the child returns to us. And that is one piece of financial burden that I think is very unfair and should be fixed by the legislation. But for now, it is not fixed, so I do not support charter schools. Thank you.
Donna? John?
I've been against charter schools all along, right from the beginning. I've stated many times that I think charter schools are an attempt to break the teachers' union, and I just don't think they should be allowed to continue. This year here is going to cost the city twenty million dollars for the charter schools to be in Lynn. Three million dollars will be reimbursed by the state for a net loss to the city of seventeen million. I think there's too many inequities. I think the teacher certification is an issue. They have to have, they don't have to have, they don't play by the same rules, they don't have to have master degrees. There are things that happen within the schools that wouldn't be allowed to happen in the public schools. There are also, as Donna alluded to, many of the students get let go in the schools, or suggested that they go back to public schools, but they always do that after October 1st, so the financial reimbursement doesn't come with them. We have, I think, over the last six years, over five hundred kids that have come back from the charter schools. You know, we have to take them back, you know, and so I think that we educate everyone. I think there's also an issue with the Sped Program. They have a Sped Program, it's nowhere as near as good as our Sped Program, which is one of the best in the state, and they also, they tell people that they do better to be better served to go back to Lynn Public Schools. And I think, I think because of all those reasons, I'm against charter schools.
Thank you, John. Lorraine?
Well, I also am. Well, I'm just going to put it this way. I am very proud of being a Lynn Public School teacher. My whole career, thirty-three and a half years, been with those wonderful children. It didn't matter anything about those children. I taught everyone in my classroom. And to get on the school committee like I am right now, I find out that we are paying twenty million dollars out of our budget, but the charter school kept. Out of that twenty million, the state is supposed to reimburse us three million, but we haven't seen it yet. The other thing is the new buildings. It's really nice that a new building can get, be put up, you know, like within a year's time, but our Lynn Public School can't get a school through? Well, the difference is the building supplies. They don't have to build a school for fifty years like we do. The cost of our materials costs twice as much as it does for those Kip Academy or other charter schools. The other thing is when students come back to Lynn, they always come back after October 1st, and the money that goes to the charter schools follows the child. So, that money, we don't see, but we are expected to educate the individuals. You don't know what it's like to be a teacher in Lynn Public Schools, and to sit back and like out of your pocket, being buying all the supplies, not all of them, because the school system does supply teachers. But we have to pay for a lot of our own materials. If I want to be creative and do a creative activity, I'm paying for it out of my own pocket, out of my salary. And to hear that twenty million dollars of our budget is going to charter schools, and they want to increase charter schools, how much more money are they going to take from the Lynn Public Schools? When are we going to be getting those extras? We have to be certified teachers, we have to have our credentials intact, or we get laid off from our jobs. So, the one thing that bothers me the most is that they have different sets of rules and we have to follow the rules.
Thank you, Lorraine. Elizabeth?
Well, thank, first of all, thank you for having me, and thank you all for coming here and listening to us. When it comes to charter schools, I understand why some parents think charter schools are their best option, but however, I cannot support the expansion of charter schools when it comes at the expense of Lynn Public Schools. Until we find a way to ensure that the addition of additional charter schools is not going to affect the funding for Lynn Public Schools, I am not able to support that. My goal is for all the children to have a remarkable outcome, and that expansion of the charter schools are not going to achieve that.
Thank you. Natasha?
Good evening, everybody. So, first of all, I think we need to have a community conversation regarding this issue. I think that we need to have all the people who are against charter schools in the room, and all the people who are for charter schools in the room, and we need to have a real adult conversation about it. There are plenty of pros and plenty of cons, and I just think that we need to have a community, a real conversation, and a community forum regarding this issue. Parents deserve to have options, and if you live in a particular zip code, you're only given a certain option. And if you do not have enough money to send your child to a private school, you should have some other option. So, I really want to make sure that all Lynn Public School kids have the best education possible, and that is why I'm running for school committee, because I really want to ensure that every child, regardless of what school they go to, has access to an excellent education. Now, I would agree that the funding issue does need to be fixed. We do need to find some more money and fund our schools at a hundred percent, and anything less than that is unacceptable. At the end of the day, it's all about the kids and making sure all kids have access to excellent education.
Thank you. Jessica?
So, I agree with a lot of the opinions that have already been stated. I feel as though the charter schools are a really great option. They sound fantastic on paper. I think for a community such as Lynn, I think a lot of parents feel as though there aren't many other options that they have. My daughter has just started at the Brickhead Elementary Schools, and I'm actually, the elementary school so far, the staff there, and the education that she's been receiving is above and beyond what I was expecting her to get. And I think that it's important for us to show the community how good of an education our kids can get. I think that the Lynn Public Schools get a bad reputation. There are a lot of families that I've seen that leave because of Lynn Public Schools, and they know that they can't get their kids into charter schools because that's their other option, and financially, private schools are just not an option for them. But I think that, you know, we can probably halt the expansion, or the request for expansion of charter schools in Lynn, if we can just share the great experiences that a lot of the kids are having. I know a lot of the panelists had students, or had kids that went through the school system, some of the panelists went through the school systems. We're having a lot of real success stories, and I think that we really need to highlight that, to be able to show that we don't necessarily need to have more charter schools, but to introduce more funding into the schools that we have now, and be able to provide all of our kids with an equal education regardless of what school they go to.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. So, generally, I am not supportive of new charters and charter expansions. I think that it's our role as leaders of the Lynn Public Schools, if we see something that we think is missing, that needs to be improved in Lynn Public Schools, we're there because we want to improve it. And so, if we, we want to make sure that the Lynn Public Schools is offering, meeting the needs of every student, and we can do that in the Lynn Public Schools. I am particularly concerned about new charters, given where we are here in Lynn, because we've had charter school applicants submitting the same application every year. For three years, they submit an application, they're submitting it again this year. And here's what happens. We all read this application very closely because we care about the future of the city, and they miss major issues. And we point out those issues, and one of these years, they're going to have, put down on paper, everything the state wants to see to be able to approve a charter school, and they're going to get a charter, and they're not going to be ready to educate our kids. They've made it clear that they're not ready to educate our kids because they're not prepared. They don't know how to provide the right special education services, the pedagogy to educate English language learners. They had major conflicts of interest in the application they submitted last time. So, that's a concern of mine, and I think it's, as leaders of the Lynn Public Schools, it's our job to point that out, to stand up for the Lynn Public Schools when unfair comparisons are made, because the Lynn Public Schools takes all kids all year long. And given the increase in student population that we've had, that's more and more important to recognize and appreciate, and be proud of, that we can do that, because we've learned how to do it, and we work hard, and our teachers work hard to make that possible, but that's not something that the charter school will do.
Thank you, Jared. Michael?
Thank you for having me. It's good to be back. I actually attended Reed Middle School a long time ago, so it's great to be back. I am not for expanding current charter schools. As a lawyer, that's my profession, I actually represent private schools, Catholic schools, and I know what a big burden it is to actually try to get tuition from parents. That's not something that a charter school has to do. The issue with regards to charter schools is the way the funding is currently calculated, and it actually takes away from the public schools. So, it's something that we need to correct. One of the things that I do as a lawyer, as well as I represent students that have special needs, to make sure that they're getting the services that they need under the IEPs. I have a strong worry with regards to how the charter schools handle those. So, it's best to leave these matters with the Lynn Public Schools. I've been through the Lynn Public Schools, I'm a product of the Lynn Public Schools, I know how they work, so it's extremely important to keep the eye on the prize, which is to have good public schools in our city, because that's what's going to help increase the property values, it's going to help make our city a better place to live. So, it's extremely important that we focus on the bigger picture. The bigger picture is the Lynn Public School system. My daughter currently is enrolled in a Lynn Public Schools, Lynn Woods, and it's one of the best. I have no issues with that school, and I believe if we can duplicate the success that we have in some of our schools, our school system will work for everybody. But expanding the current charter schools is not something that I believe we're ready to do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. John, I'd like to start the second question with you.
Do you want to read the question? You want me to?
I'm going to read the question to you.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
"The quality of the physical learning environment has been shown to have a direct and profound impact on the health and performance of students and teachers. Sadly, many Lynn schools have been identified as in need of excessive repair or replacement. What are your thoughts on what can be done to improve the physical state and overcrowding of our schools?"
Anyone that deals with the Lynn buildings, that all the teachers, any of us on the school committee know that we have a very old infrastructure. We're in need of replacement and our repair. I think replacement is the first thing that should be done in some of these schools. I have a printout of the age of the schools, and Connery is a hundred and forty-three years old. Pickering, that we just had in the pipeline for replacement, is a hundred and ten years old. And if you add up all the schools together and come up with an average age, it's eighty years old, the entire system. I think that we're in a position now that, to me, the best idea, the best approach would be to, at the first of the year, go back to the MSBA and bring in any kind of high-level power that we can get involved, and try to renegotiate the reopening of the statement, to work on the Pickering and the McManus Field complex. These, that's the first thing we have to do. We need to get some new buildings started, and I think if we can get them to go back to where we were just prior to the vote, this will eliminate the need for the old financial statement, the two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars coming from the city, but I think that's the quickest solution. We have to go after new schools. The thing with repair, if we repair Marshall, one thing a lot of people aren't aware of is, once you exceed five-hundred-thousand dollars a fiscal year, you have to make them ADA compliant. And that involves another great cost. You now have to put elevators in the building, have to put wheelchair ramps. So, it extends the cost. If the cost to repair a building is twenty million dollars, once you go into ADA compliance, you're going to at least add a third to that. So, there's a lot of, we're handicapped in a lot of methods. I think that the safest way and the most, the best way for our best interests is to go after the reopening of the Pickering and McManus Field schools.
Thank you, John. Donna? I'm sorry, not Donna. Lorraine?
This is a really, really tough question. It's been asked of me many times throughout this election season. I have to say that being on the committee and working with the Pickering Middle School development of not getting it built sadly broke my heart, because it was the beginning of changes of Lynn Public Schools, and we were working so hard for it. So, I had to wait and think about, what is it we need to do so that the next time it gets in the pipeline, it will go through? And in my reflection, I think that we need to get out to the neighbors, we need to get actual information out to the neighborhoods so that they actually know the truth and not have truths. I really need to open up my communications better, to focus on the schools and what we need. It's so sad, because the teachers in our buildings work so hard, the students in our buildings work so hard, their progress is documented, their smiling faces and their development is so easily seen if you just walk through the halls. They're working hard, they're doing their job, and we have to do our job to support them. Some of my thoughts on the overcrowded conditions coming up, it's, I think it's like an emergency. I go to John Ford a lot for guidance, because he, to me, is the chairman of the buildings and grounds, and he has a lot of expertise in this area, as does Donna Capola. And some of the things I was just thinking about for the immediate future, if we can't get a new school, then I would like to see things like taking the old four dianics, maybe using that for some overcrowdiness. I really don't want to go to split sessions with the middle schools, and it's, it's the hottest thing.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Oh, sorry.
Elizabeth?
First of all, I want to echo some of the thoughts that I spoke. I think we need to invest in infrastructure. It's urgent and it's critical. We need to alleviate the overcrowding in the classrooms, and we need to ensure that our students are in an effective learning environment. And part of that, I think we need to restart the process of the middle schools, and we need to make sure that we're reaching out to all the stakeholders and providing them the information in order to get them to buy in to the process, because that's critical. Because if we're going to a vote again, we need to make sure that all the residents in our area, and the residents of the city of Lynn are buying in to our process. So, we need to have a clear and transparent process and make sure we're communicating with them effectively. Other things that I have kind of thought is, we need to also fully fund our schools. So, we need to work with the city council and the mayor, and make sure that Lynn is given their full part in fully funding our schools, because that would also help us bring in more money. And then, I also think we should be actively seeking federal grants and foundation grants to increase the amount of money that we have available to make repairs. And that's just some of the thoughts that I have in regards to the infrastructure.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Natasha?
So, I feel that the buildings, a lot of the buildings are in terrible condition, and they need to be replaced or repaired. I also feel that we need to do a better job of maintaining our buildings so that they don't fall into disrepair, because this will continue to happen. I've talked to several voters, and many people are very upset about the two new schools vote, and they really wanted, some people wanted to see it happen, some didn't. So, really, again, it's all about talking to the voters and really seeing where's a good location, and what can be done to make sure that this doesn't happen. But we can't send our children to schools where there's mold and they're just falling apart. It's very unsafe for the children, as well as the teachers, who have to be in those buildings all the time. So, I would definitely advocate for more grant, I would engage a grant committee to get some more money into the schools, so we can fix those buildings or replace them. As well as, there's plenty of community members in Lynn that we can do a couple of community build days and repair our schools in the meantime, so that they are not in such bad condition. So, we can all work together and make sure that all of our buildings are safer and better for all of our children. And as far as overcrowding, I would like to see, teachers really need some more support in the classroom, and we need to look at going into the nearby colleges and having interns in the schools, and that would help a lot of the teachers out, because it's very hard to teach when you have thirty-plus kids in your classroom. So, I would definitely advocate for that, and some more support and more teachers in the classroom.
Thank you, Natasha. Jessica?
So, I think that the most important thing that kind of comes out of this is that we need to get the community's involvement. We need to get the community involved, and that doesn't just mean parents. There are a lot of people who live in Lynn who don't have children. There are a lot of people in Lynn who don't have children, who don't want their taxes to go up, because they don't understand what's going on in the schools, because they don't have children. So, we need to get the community to buy in. We need to get the community involved in the process. You know, we need to think outside the box as far as being able to raise money, and not only reach out to the community and have them understand why we need new schools, but also to reach out to them for, you know, fundraising possibilities. Maybe we need to have community fun, you know, phone banks. We need to have big citywide fundraisers, and have some pride in our schools. Our community needs to have pride in their own community, and in order for them to buy into that, we really have to involve them in the process and not shut them out. I'd really like to see, you know, things that nonprofits will do, like having, like churches that raise money to say, hey, if you reach these different donation levels, we'll have a tree and have your name on it, or naming a building after a big company that might exist in the city. And reaching out to our city partners for this funding, to be able to help fund these new schools, because it's obvious that the schools are in disrepair. There needs to be budgeting for the next five or ten years regarding the repairs that, the backlog of repairs that haven't been done, and the repairs that are going to need to be done, because we can't just fix what's already broken, things are going to break. So, you know, there just needs to be a rolling fund to say, hey, this is what priority is. And as Natasha said, you know, things that can be done, maybe through the community, getting community volunteers to be able to help with things that are not costly or don't require, you know, licenses and stuff like that.
Thank you, Jessica. Jared?
Thank you. This is absolutely a top priority for the Lynn Public Schools. The physical state of our schools, it's a physical tangible expression, reflection of the priority that we put on education. And as a member of the Lynn School Committee, I know that our city cares more about education than the physical state of some of our schools would suggest. I know that parents care more, I know that teachers care more, I know that voters care more, and even voters that voted against the two new schools. I think that we need to learn from what happened in the spring, and go back to the drawing table and find a way to do this, because we owe it to our kids, to the next generation, to be able to educate them. It's not just that the safe and health environment that was mentioned earlier in the question, and that's a huge priority, we're also talking about overcrowding. There's too many kids per class, and the biggest driver of that is we don't have enough classrooms to break up the classes. So, this is something that's going to take the effort of the entire city, and, you know, I think that's one of the lessons that we should take away. Lynn is poised for a lot of growth, and we hear a lot about that all the time, and when we look at a neighborhood that's about to grow, we need to ask ourselves, where are those kids going to go to school? And how can we get the people that are driving that growth to be part of that effort, that team, to make sure that there's a schoolhouse there for those kids? And that requires leadership, and it's something that we have to do together with the city council, with the mayor, with the state delegation, and with the teachers, and the parents, and being able to understand what went wrong last time so that we can learn and do it better next time.
Thank you, Jared. Michael?
Thanks for that question. I think that we build beautiful buildings. I think that Marshall was a great project, and the results are wonderful. I was one of the first classes to go to Classical, and I know that that was a beautiful building, but unfortunately, it wasn't built on the best piece of land, so we learned from that mistake. There have been some ideas that were brought forth by other candidates here, but we have to realize we're to realize where we are and that there's not much disposable income to have a phone bank, to try to raise funds, to build new schools. And yeah, the problem with our buildings now, yeah, are the age. John spoke about the average age of both, of the buildings of about 80 years and that's, that's an old building. We do need to look at what we already have. I don't think going back to the drawing board is an option. There's 1,500 pages of research done that's already up and presented to us. Why not use that? I think that the issue with the two new middle schools was the location and the presentation, unfortunately. We didn't hide anything. I don't think there were many half truths. What the issue was is we were bringing people into Pickering and they saw the state of the building. We, you know, we explained that, you know, Marshall has a library, other schools have, you know, these things that Pickering and Breed don't have. But that wasn't good enough, unfortunately. So we need to let people know, hey, we have several private schools in the city. If they were to close down, where are these kids going to go? They're going to be, there's going to be an influx in our public school systems. That's not something that was mentioned. And there was a private Catholic school that closed down in Haybrook. They had to make an emergency assessment and open up a closed school, although it wasn't in the best condition. But we have to realize that, we have to explain to our community that there are reasons why we need new buildings and it's not just because we want new things, there's a need. So that's, that's an extremely urgent thing that I believe we have to go and look into.
Thank you, Michael. Natasha, I'd like to start the third question with you.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Sure, I'm sorry.
No problem. So I've been here in Lynn for about 14 years and one of the things that has been the most perplexing to me is the way our schools look. Because unfortunately, where I have lived previously, the schools did not look like this. And no, I did not go to Lynn Public Schools, but my experience as a preschool teacher and then volunteering and getting involved in our city is when I was able to see that, what our schools look like. And I was just, I believe that the best way to fix this issue is to build on to the schools that we already have. I have seen this done in other school systems that I live in, but the issue is, where is the money to build on the schools that we already have? And that's where I come into looking at evidence, I mean, looking at research, which Michael Sadoway had mentioned, which is, are there other communities and other cities that look like us and have had these issues and what did they do to fix them? So how do we look into that? How do we utilize grant opportunities, like Natasha said, to bring new revenue into our schools? And how do we think outside of the box, like Jessica said, and maybe do phone banks or do, you know, get the community involved? So these are the ideas that I have as a school committee candidate to improve our schools.
Thank you, Cherish. Brian.
Yeah, so the schools, you know, I've been able to travel around and tell my story across, you know, the city of Lynn, I've been invited to be a guest speaker on my life story. It's sad. Kids and teachers are on the front lines of, you know, bad mismanagement of funds. And these 80, the average is 80 years old. The morale's low. When I go around and speak with teachers and people who work in these buildings and they'll tell you, they'll tell you testimony that just, it makes you, it makes you cringe on some of the stories you hear. Teachers are getting sick, kids are getting sick. It is sad. You know, you put on this sadly, you know, many of these schools have a high need, but yet nothing's happened because, you know what? There is no money. We're on defense. And I think the best way to get back on offense is to develop a strategic plan that's going to open up our offense to make money. We need to develop a really intensive grant writing centralized program that's going to allow us to reach for federal state monies. Also, when it comes to developing a fundraising campaign, it's going to take a community to get active. Because in our, in our community, we have a lot of resilient teachers. A lot of you guys in this audience have been in the public school system and you see it on a day-to-day basis. When it comes to developing a strategic plan, we need to include the state as well. We need to have people on this board, this committee, people going out to the state house to really negotiate and get to the table to request more money for these schools. And it's not just about, you know, we're going to have overcrowded. So if that's the case, we needed to be, we need to be on the office with developing collaborators with Salem State, North Shore. We have some of the best universities in Boston right at our hands. It's important to really open up the platform too when it comes to the way we take donations. Right now, back to question one, donations, we can't, we can't receive a private donation. I bet there's a bunch of alumni in here from Pickering and a lot of other schools that will provide money. How many people in here would give a dollar back to your elementary school? Raise your hand. Exactly.
Thank you, Brian. Donna.
Okay. Our schools are in need of being replaced. We need to update them. They're old. But I did hear the voters loud and clear, you know, it was a concern for a location, it was a concern for the tax amount that they would have to pay. I did sit on the committee with John Ford and there were at least 20 people at that table. There were a lot of hours spent, 80 to 100 hours were spent at the table, putting a lot of thought into where to, you know, place the schools and plans to look at. And that wasn't just something that people at the table decided. There are actual rules in the state of applying for the money, getting approved for the money. And the state is there with us as an urban city with 80% of that money. So the money was there. It was what was left to pay that, you know, would have been a tax thing. We have to come up with it. I'm very willing to sit back down again and look at a plan again, but you have to understand, there's a lot of people making what sounded like great suggestions here, but unfortunately, there are, those things can't, can't be used for building schools. So it's not being realistic. The truth of it is, we have to go back, Lynn is very land poor for land you own. You have to understand, you can't just go out and buy land from somebody if you say so-and-so's got, you know, enough 20 acres of land and will buy it. We can't because the state won't reimburse you and we can't afford to buy that. Doing the 20% of our cost is big enough. But the one thing I want to say is, houses are selling in Lynn. They're, okay, I have to stop, so. Apologize.
Thank you, Donna. Natasha, we're going to start the third question with you. The funding of the Lynn Public Schools has been a controversial issue over the past several years. As a member of the school committee, what does fully funding the schools mean to you and how would you manage the Chapter 70 funding?
Absolutely. So the funding of the schools is very important. It's been an issue for many years, as far back as I can remember. The schools need to be funded at 100%. So anything less than 100% is unacceptable. So what I want to see is more funding for our schools. So how are we going to do that? Like I said previously, I do feel that we need to engage a city planner as well as a grant writing team and get some more money into our schools. Because there is money out there and it's not going to just fall in our lap. So we have to request it. So we have to find more money. There is more money out there and there are plenty of people who want to support Lynn Public Schools and all schools for kids. So I definitely want to see our schools funded at 100%. I think we also need to analyze the budget line by line and really take time to go through each line to see where we can move some things around and change a few things up and maybe we can find money in different places and just move it around a little bit so that it's better suited to different things. So really needs to be, the budget needs to be analyzed, for sure. So I definitely want to advocate for 100% funding and nothing less than that.
Thank you, Natasha. Jessica.
I think 100% funding is absolutely necessary. I don't think anybody that's sitting up here would disagree with that. Obviously, there has to be collaboration between the school committee and city hall, the mayor, to be able to figure out where the money needs to get moved from. We can't just move it around from, from school to school. We need to take it from somewhere. I think it's important that we're not paying penalties for not spending the amount of money that we're required to spend. We're spending money on penalties instead of spending money on kids. That's insane. So I think that's obviously really important. I also think that, yes, there needs to be more, a dedicated team for finding grants for the schools so that we can draw more money from the state. Maybe there's federal money that we can draw from. There's more money out there to be gotten. We just need to constantly be reaching out for it so that when we're able to, you know, when there's something that fits, grants have to be given out in certain ways and I understand that. So we have to find the ones that fit us and we have to be constantly searching for new ones to be able to fund what we're doing. I also understand that there are rules as far as where money can come from and I think that there are a lot of creative ways to take, to take funding in a typical way and change it to fit the rules so that we can get money into Lynn's schools. I think that's number one. But it's really important that we're not paying penalties for not spending the amount of money we should be spending on our kids.
Thank you. Jared.
Yes, thank you. Fully funding the schools, to me, means at a minimum, fully funding the schools in the eyes of the state. So I'm talking about the Chapter 70 formula. And that is something that my colleagues and I have pushed really hard to make sure that the city gets there because it's been a problem in the last few years. We got in some trouble a few years ago, the city got into some trouble a few years ago because of really an accounting error. And then that problem got worse and we had to dig ourselves out of the hole. And given where we are now, we have, we have a reason to be confident that that's going to happen this year, but it requires constant effort to make sure that it does happen and it's important. But it's not just fully funding the schools in the eyes of the state, I think, when we think about what the needs are for the Lynn Public Schools, because the state doesn't always have it right. The state formula is flawed and we get hit sometimes. A lot of you will likely remember when the Chapter 70 funding definition of low-income students was revised a couple of years ago. And instead of the free and reduced lunch certification process, they were defining low-income students as economically disadvantaged and missing a whole category of students that wouldn't show up in the state's records. And a lot of those students are in Lynn. And so we were one of the cities that were hit the worst by that change, millions of dollars. And, you know, it's not enough on the school committee for us to say, you know, that's too bad, I hope the state gets it right. And we didn't. We wrote a letter to, my colleagues and I wrote a letter to the Commonwealth, working with the teachers and the teachers' union, to point that out and have, continued to advocate on that issue, on that formula. So I think that that's the kind of work that we need to continue to understand that we have to at least fully fund the schools in the eyes of the state, but continue to hold the state accountable to make sure that their funding meets our needs.
Thank you, Jared. Michael.
Thank you. I agree with Jared when he says that we need to fully fund the schools in the eyes of the state. That's extremely important. What I also agree with is with Jessica when she says that we also need to get city hall involved, but the mayor's a member of the school committee as well, so I don't think we need to reach out to her. She's a part of the conversation. Who we do need to reach out to is the city councils, councilors, because it's extremely important that they understand the current state of the schools and why funding is extremely important. As the chairperson for Lynn Community Connection Coalition, we depend heavily on grants. Also, being the secretary of the board for Good Hope, which is a nonprofit, we depend heavily on grants. So having a grant writers is extremely important. Working with the state, as Jared said, is extremely important. And that will start with fixing the formula they used for funding the charter schools. And it will also require us speaking up about the unfunded mandates that they put on the public schools. I think that if we can do all that and have fiscal responsibility, we'll be able to fully fund the schools in the definition of the state, which is extremely important. But mainly, we definitely need to get all the money we can possibly get from the state and federal government. And we also need to have a voice and speak up to the proper officials to make sure that Lynn isn't being ignored and that they understand that what they do impacts our students and our teachers. So that's extremely important and that's what my belief is. Thank you.
Thank you. Cherish.
Hi. So I too agree that we need to fully fund our schools. Outside of my campaign, I am a full-time advocate and well, community organizer. And one of the things that I, that where I work, where we have, one of the things that we have fought for is for the Fair Share Amendment, which is a constitutional amendment that will raise the taxes of those that annually make a million and above by 4%. And that will bring a new revenue into our education system and our transit system. The exact number would be about $1.4 billion a year, if I'm correct. Don't quote me on the exact number. But, so, and that will be in 2018. So seeing with that, with the hopes that that funding is actually coming in, seeing that so many people have fought for it and that it will be on the ballot, I have hopes that we have new revenue that will be coming in. And I'd like to see us do wonderful things with that revenue. And one of the things that I want us to evaluate at, if I am elected, I would want to evaluate where our money is slipping through the cracks and where we could do, so I would do, I would do a survey, honestly, on or within the school committee or maybe a meeting or just talking about what's happening with the current funding that we have and where it's sliding through the cracks, where it's not being best used. And I strongly, I think that we need to invest in the areas in which we are in the education system where I feel that we are not our strongest, which is math, science, and technology. Because in order for our students to be able to succeed and to, you know, live out their, fight in this current work environment, they have to have strong math, science, and technological skills. And with our building and structure being so old, that's not as, not possible right now.
Thank you. Brian.
So I also, I agree that we need to fully fund our schools at 100%. So in need, in order to really, you know, to do this, we need to pay attention to those lying items. I think, again, I agree with Cherish about, you know, evaluating where the money's going, how are we going to, you know, make a real solid assessment on where some of this loose money is falling through the cracks. We need communication with city council and the state, but also, you know, the Department of Education. They are stakeholders as well. We need to play, you know, a role at the table with them and we do have a good relationship with them. It's just a matter of, you know, how we can get to the table as a community to advocate for, you know, fully funding our schools. It's a career that many people, and if you're a teacher or even a student, that's very important to our society. We have to fully invest in our education and to get those services out there, it is all about the money. And at the end of the day, we need to figure out how we're going to manage Chapter 70 funding and whatever assistance that we get in addition to really fully, you know, deliver those services. And with all that said, expanding grant writing capacity is vital to really developing those resources that we need, both informally and formally. And, I don't know about that.
Thank you. Donna.
I agree. It isn't, do I want it to be 100%? It's a requirement from the state that it be at 100%. So it's necessary. My, what I would like to see is that it's more than 100% and that we have what we need for every classroom, for every student's need, and that it be more than that. So the reality is, we need more revenue in the city. More businesses need to be brought into the city. I, you know, I know the superintendent has had her days where, she just said, I can't believe that we're just creating more housing because we have a problem with space in our school, the conditions of our school, and what you're bringing us is just more students. We need you to bring us more revenue on the school side. That's a must. You know, we know, you turn over the back of the item and, on a Saturday, and you will see, our houses are selling. We have a lot of older population, they're putting their homes up for sale, young families are coming in. And a good many of them ask, you know, what schools will my kids go to? Or if they don't ask, they find out afterwards, it's one of our schools that we- Or if they don't ask, they find out afterwards, it's one of our schools that we, that we want to replace. I mean, we're looking at Tracy, Aborn, there's elementaries. So you get young families coming in. They must, we must have those good schools. So we do have to really get after the council to really look at bringing in revenue for businesses. But my hope is someday that my grandkids that are in public school right now will be at more than a hundred percent funding.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I, I'd like everybody else to agree that we have to maintain at least, and we're required to maintain at least, a hundred percent net school spending. But contrary to some things that are being said, has nothing to do with line items in the budget, has nothing to do with grant writing. Net school spending, the money is strictly a 75-25 split between the state and the city. I spoke to Senator McGee about getting more Chapter 70 money, and he wanted to light a fire under Senator McGee, mentioned Chapter 70 money, I found out. The state is going to give us 157 million this year. That's our 75 percent. We have to come up with 52.5 million dollars from the city. As of this morning, I spoke to the CFO, we were 2.4 million dollars down, which is hard to gauge. It's not to say we won't make it because the figures won't be in until December. But it's pretty, you know, a clear-cut split. They give us 75 and we give back 25, but we have to maintain that 25 because the money is critical to the use of school.
Thank you, John. Lorraine?
Well, the Chapter 70 monies, last year was the first budget I worked on and we were told that it was at a hundred percent, if not more. And then there was a clerical error, as Jared mentioned, and we ended up not meeting our Chapter 70 goals. So John sort of took my fire because I was going to explain about the 75 percent to the students in the back of the room. Seventy-five percent comes from the state and that's net school spending and 25 is our city contribution. As Jared also mentioned that we are at Chapter, our Chapter 70 is at a hundred percent for this budget. It really doesn't have to do anything about the line-to-line items. I think that we were very thorough going through our budget. And the end of this question says, "How would you manage Chapter 70 funding?" We could get a, I would love to see school-based after-school programs that have a study component so that students would have a safe place to go and study within their own school. That's what I would like to see. So I know how important Chapter 70 funding is. I know how we can meet a hundred percent. And I think that we will get there. So that's all, that's all I have to say, except for that, everything else.
Thank you, Lorraine. Elizabeth?
Well, I agree with everyone that we need to fully fund our school a hundred percent, but I think that would be a minimum. I understand how Chapter 70 funding works. I know the state gives 75 percent and Lynn provides 25 percent, but in addition to that, we should be seeking out federal grants. And we should be reaching out to our state and federal delegations to see where we can find money and how the state can support us in grant application. It's done. So I think we should have put all our eggs in one basket. We should work to make sure that we have the Chapter 70 money, but we should also create a rainy day fund and go out and seek out those additional funds that are available to our schools. I mean, we have, we have some great teachers in Lynn. We have some of the most hard-working teachers in Lynn. And in order to fully support them, we have to not just at minimum fully fund our school by state. Guidelines, we need to go above and beyond for that. So that's...
Thank you very much. You're each going to be given two minutes for a closing statement. I'd like to begin closing statements with Michael.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for allowing me to be here to speak and be a part of this forum. It's been a great time walking and meeting so many people. My biggest issue here is that the expectation for every community is that their student or their child is going to receive a good education. And how do we get there? We get there by fully funding our schools and providing the proper tools that every teacher needs to do their job. There shouldn't be a need to GoFundMe for a teacher to do a certain project in the school. Yesterday, I was at Classical and that was the biggest thing I heard back from teachers, is they have no outside classroom experience with the students, so they don't get that real-world experience. And I find that that's an issue. I'm a product of Lynn Public Schools, through elementary school, middle school. We actually went to Martha's Vineyard, we got to see how nice it was, and that was a great experience I'll never forget. And obviously through high school, most of high school was a wonderful experience as well. I want our students to be able to receive a good education. My daughter, she's in the fourth grade, and it's extremely important that she receives the best education. And we're lucky where we live. I know Donna spoke about people buying houses and then they see what schools were near there and they see the level that it's graded by the Department of Education. Lucky for me, my daughter attends Lynn Woods and it's a great school. But that's because they have a great PTO, PTA, and that's something that I want to duplicate around the city because we need to do that. We need parents involved. And my wife's pregnant and we're due actually in a month from now, November 2nd, and I'm going to have another daughter that I'm going to have to worry about. So that's why I'm running. I'm running to make sure that the teachers have the proper tools, the students are in a safe place, and they're receiving the best education possible. And that's very important to me because it impacts me directly. So thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Cher?
So thank you for your time and your patience and the opportunity to talk about what I would do as a candidate for school committee. And I just want to tell you that as a candidate, I, education of our children is key. As many of us have heard most likely growing up, that once you have your education, nobody can take that away from you. And, and it's so true. I have a little boy, he's six years old, and I look at him and I tell him every day that the strong, "What's the strongest muscle in your body?" And he'll look at you and you'll say, and I'll say, "What's the strongest muscle in your body?" And he doesn't go like this. He points to his head. Because, once again, once somebody gives you your education, once it goes in here, it can't be taken out. And I want to make an impact that allows all of our children here in Lynn to have that experience. No, I didn't go to Lynn Public Schools, but I, the experience that I've had going to various different schools across the state, was a single mom, all public schools, I believe gives me a really good experience and understanding of what could be done here. And my experience as an organizer, I think, also can bring forth some really outside-of-the-box thinking into what needs to be done with our public schools. And once again, thank you for your time and hope to have one of your six votes November 7th.
Thank you, Cher. Brian?
How many teachers are in today's audience? Can you raise your hand, please? Thank you. I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart because I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for you guys. And as a teacher, right in the audience, Brian Love-Pearl was my high school teacher. That man right there changed my life. I will never, ever give up on you guys because you guys never gave up on me. Because at the end of the day, you are a vital stakeholder to our educational services. It is very important to note that. I'm here to increase engagement in our community. I'm here to spread awareness of people like myself, who was labeled a first-generation, low-income Latino. I was labeled an unaccompanied youth at seventeen years old at Lynn English High School. I started off with nothing. I have a bachelor's degree, I have a master's degree, and I am going to be pursuing my doctorate. I started my career as a substance abuse clinician for the mental health insurance office, and now I'm a social worker for the Department of Children and Families in Lynn. I'm dedicated to public service. And every day, whether I get elected or not, I'm going to pursue social justice. And it's all about the kids, the families, and the programs and the resources we put out there to set these kids up to win. I'm proud that I'm from Lynn. And every day I go out there, I represent who I am and where I come from. And it started right here. It started with the teachers and the people in my life that intervened and made it happen for me. And you guys never give up, and I'll tell you right now, I will never give up. And I never stop learning, I never start striving. I'm telling you right now, I would appreciate that endorsement, but at the end of the day, please, there's a lot of good candidates up here. And please consider that all of us are strongly using the neighborhood, but at the end of the day, I'm a hard worker and I'm willing to show day in and day out. And I'm here to represent a really unique voice in the community. And I'll be your guys' voice and everyone else that's out there.
Thank you, Brian.
You went through what I went through.
Thank you, Brian. Donna?
Yes. It's going to be a high act to follow there, for sure. But I, I just want to say, number one, I, we're probably up here, you're sitting there thinking, you know, we're politicians, but honestly, I don't think of myself as a politician. I think as myself, as a, as a parent, who at the time made a good friendship with a teacher, Joanne McCarthy, who has since passed, but she worked here in this school as a reading teacher. And I met her here at Breed when they had PTA. And she used to say all the time, like, the most important job is being a parent and being their first teacher for their child and to have a partnership with teachers. She was, sat on the state PTA board and she got a lot of parents to be very interested in PTA. And she used to say all the time, "The P in PTA is for parent and the T is for teacher and we join hands together and we do it together." And she made something very important to me. And I tried to talk many people into running. I used to go to school committee meetings and try to talk other people into running and one day just decided that I was going to run myself. It's an honor to have served on the school committee. My heart is for the kids are first. It's the most important. They get their education and that, and I, and support the teachers to let, so that the kids do get their education. But it has been an honor and I will always be outspoken at school committee meetings when I have a question about something and I ask you for one of your six votes to send me back. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. John?
Hi, Donna mentioned something that I say to people all the time. I consider myself a pretty good school committee member, but I'm a lousy politician. And if you follow me around, you'd know that. I've been on the committee since 2002. I've thoroughly endured the experience. I just retired from the state. I'm now a full-time school, school committee member, and I would hope to continue to be a full-time school committee member for the next two years. I've got a master's in education. I get twenty-five years business management, business management experience. I think I bring a lot of expertise and common sense to the table. I'm number one on the ballot. I would very much appreciate one of your six votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Lorraine?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Sheila O'Neill and the Lynn Teachers Union for having this forum so we are allowed to speak. It has truly been an honor to serve the children of Lynn and Lynn Public School System. I would love to continue to serve the Lynn Public Schools in the position of school committee woman. My goal on the school committee is for Lynn Public Schools to be an excellent system. I want us to reach excellence. I want us to help our children to walk out those doors on their high school graduation and walk into any college or any job or anything they want to do, that all their dreams come true, like it did for me. All I can say is that for thirty-three and a half years, you have trusted me with your children in my classroom. So I'm asking you if you would please consider me for one of your six votes on November 7th, and I'm number four on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Elizabeth?
So I am a product of Lynn Public Schools. I could have been one of your students. I am a parent of children that attend Lynn Public Schools and I represent some of the parents that we deal with on a daily basis. I think I bring a really unique perspective to the school committee because of that and also the fact that I'm a first-generation American and that when my parents, when I was growing up, my parents didn't speak English. So they didn't know how to communicate with the teachers. In fact, to them, that was a big barrier and they didn't attend any meetings because they didn't feel comfortable. I want to make sure that we're actively empowering families to participate in their children's education, that we're reaching out to them. And if they don't come to us, then we need to go directly to them. And we can do that by going to places like Pathways or going to places like the New American Center and having a forum and finding those parents that are hard to reach and explaining to them why it's so important for them to participate in their children's education. When parents participate in their children's education, they have better grades and they get better educational outcomes. So that's part of what I want to do. I am running because, again, I am a parent of children in the school system. And I want to help as much as I can to make sure that all children in Lynn have access to a high-quality education and have the best educational outcomes possible. So I ask you to give me one of your six votes on November 7th, and I'm number seven on the ballot.
Thank you. Natasha?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Thank you for listening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being an informed voter. I think it's really important to know who your candidates are, to know who you're voting for. It's really important. So for me, I've lived in Lynn for the last nineteen years. I love the city of Lynn. I have five wonderful children, ages ten through twenty-one. Two of them right now are in college and so I'm very busy. Also, I was also the first one in my family to go to college, to a four-year college because my parents pushed me. And after going to college, I went to law school, so I'm now a practicing attorney. And I really am running for office because I've always been involved in the community and my kids' schools, but I really just want to give back. I want to make sure that all kids have access to an excellent education. The three main things I really want to work on is parent engagement because it's so important, as well as community schools, and special needs advocacy. I have two sons that have special needs and I saw firsthand how difficult it is to sit in an IEP meeting, even as an attorney, to hear things about your child. It's just very difficult. And parents really need to know how to navigate the system so they can advocate for their children. So that is really one of the things I really want to work on, as well as community engagement with the teachers. Teachers need lots of support. And I never realized how hard teaching was until I was a substitute teacher in Lynn. And then I realized how hard teachers have it. And I really, I respect teachers more than I can ever say. And they spend so much time with our kids and I really want to make sure they have the support that they need because many of them feel that they can't speak out. And if they're in conditions that they can't talk about, it's really hard. So we need to really make sure we support all the wonderful work that these teachers are doing. So I am number ten on the ballot, all the way at the bottom. And again, my name is Natasha Mejri Madri. I'm the longest one on the ballot, all the way at the bottom. So if you could please just start at the bottom and work your way up, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Natasha. Jessica?
Yes, so again, thank you for having us here. It's been really great to listen to everyone's ideas and opinions about what we want to see with the Lynn Public Schools moving forward. I one-hundred percent agree with Lorraine. I think the Lynn Public Schools can be excellent. I think we can go above and beyond the, you know, minimum funding and minimum requirements to get kids to apply for college. I think that every kid has an ability to be excellent, to be great. And I think parent involvement is important in that. I think community involvement is important in that. I think that involving students in the community is important in that, to that. People, or kids can learn about the diverse community that we do have in the city of Lynn. And I think that's important for them, not only, you know, growing up, but also getting into the real world. People are going to encounter people that are not like them in many different ways. So I think it's important to be able to do that. One of the other things that's really important to me is, in light of a lot of recent, recent events, I'd like to see some, some programs that can be brought in in regards to community violence and gun violence. I'm part of the Sandy Hook Promise. I'm a former resident of Sandy Hook, Connecticut, and I'd really like to see, they've put together a lot of free programs for students. One of them is the Start With Hello program. It's for second through sixth grade. There's another Say Something program for sixth through twelfth grade. And these are all free programs that we can bring to the school. It helps bring the kids together, especially the Start With Hello program. Kids can reach out and expand to each other and learn about each other without anybody feeling left out, without anyone feeling as though they're an outsider or they're different, no matter what, be it color or special needs, anything like that. I think this is good to bring, bring everybody together and then kids can bring this home to their communities and it can help our community grow as well. to their communities, and it can help our community grow as well.
Thank you. Jared?
Thank you. Thank you to the Lynn Teachers Union for organizing this, and to all of you for coming, and thank you to the Teachers Union for the questions. If any of you have more questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm on Facebook. All my contact information is on my website, jarednicholson.org. I'm running for Realization in School Committee, because I so believe in the future that this city has, and that the public schools are the key to that future. And I also plan to raise a family here, and my wife and I want to send our future kids to great public schools. There's a lot of issues facing the Lynn Public Schools. There's no doubt about it, and we need to talk through those issues and work through those issues together. And when we do, and this is particularly important in the context of public education discussions over the last few years, we need to make sure that we set aside time to recognize and appreciate the hard work that's done by our teachers here in Lynn. And my mother was an early education teacher for over 30 years, and a lot of my mentors and role models over the years have been, have been teachers, and I would include my mom in that. Actually, when people ask my dad to name his favorite teacher, he always says, "His wife." And so I guess, yeah, that applies. Right, right. So I know that teachers love their students and want to see their students succeed, and I want to help teachers succeed. And I think there's a lot that we can do together to continue to improve the Lynn Public Schools. So I hope you'll continue to reach out. Some of the work that I did on my first term, that I'm most proud of, I did in collaboration with teachers. We, with my colleagues, we passed a policy this year to support, to allow the use of crowdfunding in classrooms. That was something that teachers had asked for. So I think there's, I hope you continue to reach out, and I hope to earn your vote on November 7th, so that we can continue to work together.
Thank you, Jared. On behalf of the Lynn Teachers Union, I'd like to thank all of the candidates for participating tonight. Thank you. [applause]
I'd like to thank you, everybody, for coming, and for those of you out there watching. Let us know what you think and what your ideas are. We really appreciate it. LTU 1037@lynteachersunion.org. Give us your thoughts. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So.